Are you ready? I'd like to call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Before I ask for a motion to certify closed session, I'd like to remind people in the audience and watching that we have a process to allow for citizen comments, and you need to fill out a card and submit it to the clerk so that we can call your name. So with that, can I have a motion to certify closed session?
And I'm sure I move the Williamsburg James, uh, I certify that the best of each member's knowledge is the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law that only such public matters as were identified in motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Zone B.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Thank you. Ms. Sersa, will you take attendance, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Zone B.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young. Ms. Cook.
Here. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move the-
I have a second.
Second.
Excellent. It's moved in second. It has no any discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Sersa, will you call the roll to approve the agenda, please?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Zone B.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. All right. That brings us to announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'd like to begin this evening by thanking our families and staff for their flexibility following this weekend's snow. As I've said before, making the decision to close schools is never easy. Our operations team is out on the roads both day and night assessing road conditions. I was out myself driving around on Monday, and it certainly was not good. And while some parts of the county were relatively clear, other neighborhoods were still covered in ice and snow. As you know, student and staff safety will always be our top priority. And in the interest of safety, the best option was to close schools Monday and Tuesday for students. I realize this may have caused some childcare challenges for families, and we appreciate their flexibility. As a division, we always try to make announcements as early as possible to allow families as much time to make arrangements. We are currently still making the decision about tomorrow. The plan at the moment is to start on time, but please stay tuned to the news as we will be assessing roads early tomorrow morning. Speaking of our students, I want to say a big congratulations to the hundreds of WJCC school students and staff who took part in the 10th Annual Slay Bell 5K on Saturday. Proceeds from the event sponsored by Centerra support the school health initiative program in our schools. As you know, SHIP is a partnership between the school division and the Williamsburg Health Foundation. We are committed to working together to create a healthier community by promoting healthy eating habits and an active lifestyle. Most of our schools have running clubs and students who took part in the Slay Bell 5K. You can see photos from this year's 5K in both the SHIP and WJCC schools Facebook pages. Finally, I've got an important reminder for parents and staff. Tomorrow is the day to sign up to receive text alerts from WJCC schools. Wednesday evening, any cell phone number currently in our rapid notification system will be sent a text message asking the recipient to confirm that he or she wants to receive text alerts. Simply respond why or yes. Families who do not currently receive emergency notifications on their cell phone will need to log into View to add that phone number. Staff can also make changes in the MUNIS internal system. Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Ms. Hummel?
Yes, I would like to talk briefly about our upcoming self-assessment for the school board, our own school board assessment. So I sent all of the school board members a survey yesterday which is an exact online duplication of this survey right here. And so if you could take the time to complete this by December 31st, I'd appreciate it. If you are having problems doing the online version, just fill out paper version and give it to me. The online version is preferable only because I can keep everything completely confidential. Would have any questions? Um, yeah, and deadline, the 31st of December, so we can talk about it at our planning meeting in January.
Mrs. Young?
I had the opportunity to attend SAC with Mrs. Taylor. And for those of you who don't know what SAC is, it's the Student Advisory Committee, and it is composed of students from each of the three high schools and each of the grade levels, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior. I might have a hard time remembering that. But it's an absolutely delightful and fun committee, and it's really the best committee to ever be on. And it's so much fun to be with the high school students. And I do appreciate their point of view, and we will have the opportunity to meet some more. So I'm, just wanted to relay that information about them this year.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing their recommendations in June. Anyone else? Any other announcements? Okay. Hearing none, that brings us to citizens' comments. I don't believe we have any cards. Nope. Okay, no cards, so we'll move on to proposed agenda items. These two items are placeholders, which will occur for action at the first meeting in January. The first is award a contract for request for proposal 19-13672, Design Services for Entry Alterations for WJCC Public Schools. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Snipes is here to present this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair. School board members. Dr. Heron, tonight's proposed agenda item is an information item and does not require any action. The FY18 CIP budget included a total of $645,214 to complete the entrance alterations at six schools. Those six schools are Stonehouse, Berkeley, James River, Lafayette, Laurel Lane, and Toano. An RFP for Design Services was issued on November 9th, 2018, the due date of December the 11th. The RFP will be awarded based on the following evaluation criteria: understanding the pros, the project requirements, depth and breadth of experience of the principal firm and its personnel, the ability to provide services, and the experience of the firm in completing similar projects. As stated, this item is an informational and a placeholder item. The superintendent recommends that the board review the project information and be prepared to vote at the January 8th, 2019 meeting. That is a long way away. January 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Any questions for Mr. Snipes?
Just have a question. Mr. Snipes, this RFP is, RFP, I guess it's not RFP.
No.
Sorry. Is to design the entrances for what purpose?
It is to design the entrances to funnel all the traffic and all the guests to come into the school, into the office.
Oh, it's for security?
Yes.
Safety and security. Okay, thank you.
And with these seven schools, all 16?
No. We have two schools that are remaining, which are Jamestown and Matthew Waley.
And if I could add, Jamestown remodeling of that entrance has just been approved by the Board of Supervisors in their end-of-year spending plan this evening. And the Matthew Waley project is minimal because the doors are already there.
Any other questions? We'll look forward to seeing this at our next meeting. The next one is award a contract for invitation forbid, 19-13660, Roof Restoration at Lafayette High School.
Thank you again. Again, this item is an information item, does not require any action tonight. Design for this project was approved in the FY17 CIP, and construction was approved in the FY19 CIP. The total approved budget was $2,954,000, $54,156. And after design of $172,000, the remaining project balance for construction is $2,782,961. An IFB was issued on November 17th with the due date of December the 4th. This project is scheduled for completion prior to the start of the 2019, 2020 school year. The scope of work for the project includes, but is not limited to, replacing selected areas of the roof with the two-pie bitumen system and replace and relocation of roof drains and application of a white two-coat fluid applied roof system. And unlike an RFP, which contains evaluation criteria, which you heard in the previous agenda item, this is an IFB and will be based on the most responsive and responsible bidder. The superintendent recommends that the board review the project information and be prepared to vote at the January 8th, 2019 meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Snipes? Just as a refresher, I think this is one of the items that came in a little bit more expensive than we thought during the last CIP process. Is that, can you remind us about that, please?
Yes. We went out to a couple of vendors and asked what their estimate was for this. The facility condition index came in a little less than what they were expecting, so we did have to raise the budget.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is 7.01, an information discussion item. WJCC's 2018-2019 Equity Series, WJCC Portrait of a Graduate Class of 2018. Dr. Heron.
Madam Chair, annually we bring you information about the achievement of students and the portrait of a graduate for WJCC, and Mr. Thorpe is here to make the presentation this evening, and I believe he'll be joined for part of it by Dr. Worley.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron. Tonight, Dr. Worley and I are pleased to present you information related to WJCC's Portrait of a Graduate for the cohort graduating class of 2018. As part of this overview for the class of 2018, we will look at this graduating class's SAT results, ACT results, along with graduation rates and advanced placement information. During the course of the next few slides, we will refer to information on the screen as well as data on the infographic that's at your workstation. The class of 2018 had an on-time graduation rate of 92.1%. The on-time graduation rate is the percentage of students graduating in four years. You can see that our cohort completion rate is 95.2%. And the cohort completion rate is the on-time graduation rate plus students who earned a GED. The dropout rate for this class was 2.8%.
Yeah, can you-
Can we advance the slide?
Yeah, can you give us a chance to-
You're talking about the slide that we're not on.
Sorry. I'm so sorry.
Okay, just let us absorb that for a second.
I think some information is on the slide, and also some is presented in this as well.
My fault. I missed the click in my script. My apologies. Sorry. I'm very excited. I'm very excited. On the Scholastic Aptitude Test, students can earn scale scores of between 200 and 800 on each of the two main sections, reading and writing, and mathematics. WJCC students' average on the reading/writing part of the SAT was 575, outpacing the state and total group averages. On the SAT math, WJCC students' average was 558, also greater than the Virginia and total group averages. Students who take the American College Test, or the ACT, are scored in four areas: English, Math, Reading, and Science. The highest possible score in each of these subtests is 36. The graphic on the screen shows a comparison between the average scale scores for the graduating class of 2018, and that's in green, and mean scale scores for Virginia and the nation. College readiness benchmarks are established to determine the minimum score needed on an ACT subject area test to indicate a 50% chance of obtaining a B or higher, or a 75% chance of obtaining a C or higher in corresponding credit-bearing college courses. The national benchmark ACT scores are 18 for English, 22 for Math, 22 for Reading, and 23 for Science. The infographic and the slide show the percentage of the graduating class that scored at or above these ACT subtest benchmarks. So for instance, 71% of the class of 2018's ACT test takers scored at or above the reading benchmark of 22 points.
How many of our students take the ACT versus the SAT, or both?
Thank you. We've actually seen a sharp increase nationwide in the SAT since they made the revised change in 2016. College Board says that 25% of, nationally, 25, there was a 25% increase in SAT test takers from 2017 to 2018 that didn't equate that much higher. We went from 570 SAT test takers in the cohort class of 2017 to 574 SAT test takers in cohort 2018. However, on ACT, we've seen a sharp decline. So again, from the cohort class of 2017, there were 283 ACT test takers. In the cohort class of 2018, there were 199 test takers. And so these actually follow national trends, although our SAT is not as sharp of an increase as it is nationwide.
This is a crazy question. What does cohort mean in this instance?
So again, these are only the students that were in this graduating class.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. That was a good question. The, in terms of advanced placement, the College Board's Advanced Placement Programs offers high school students opportunities to complete college-level courses and potentially earn college credit while still in high school. Colleges and universities will often consider students who score a 3, 4, or 5 in an AP exam for exemption from coursework with college credit granted for these courses prior to entering college. Scores on AP exams may also be used by colleges and universities to consider student scholarship opportunities. This slide shows the percentage of the class of 2018 AP test takers from each of our high school students who scored a 3, 4, or 5 on their AP exams. Approximately 80% of all WJCC AP exams earned a score of 3, 4, or 5.
Clarify what the current policy is if you take AP. You want the weighted, weighted grade? You have to take that? Or did that go away? At some point, that was a policy.
Could invite Dr. Worley up here to respond to that question. Thank you.
Taking the test is actually a choice for the student. So you can be in the class without taking the test.
And do you still get the weighted?
Credit, yes.
Credit, yes.
I'd like to follow up on that a little bit. I'd like to know how many students take the classes versus take the tests. Not necessarily by subject, but I'd like to get a better sense of what that gap is. Because I'm presuming not everyone who takes the class takes the test.
I'll get that information back for you.
Thank you. And it would be nice to have that by school.
I have a question. So, and who pays for the test? Do we pay for the test?
We use-
Or do individual parents pay for the test?
Several years ago, we did pay for the tests, and then in the budget crisis, 2008 and beyond, we stopped paying for the test.
Thank you.
Do they do it for free and reduced?
I can speak from my experience. We tend to help out students that cannot. They can come forward and get assistance. I don't know if that's an official thing. That's something we could look into.
I think it's an official thing.
Okay, good.
Like 80 bucks or something.
A hundred dollars a test.
Yeah.
And depending on what college or university you're interested in, if, like William &amp; Mary and University of Virginia, if you don't get a 5, then... So some of it might be a student thinking, eh, I think I might get a 3 or 4, but I'm not sure if I'm going to get a 5, so they might not take it.
And I'd spend the hundred bucks to take it.
Right, because it's expensive.
Then we don't have as a division a very good sense of this success of those classes.
Yep.
Well, I will say, giving the students the opportunity to be in the class and being exposed to the level of learning, and that's something that we're working on right now with the AP hack to increase enrollment. And so we may, we may not, we may, I don't know what the scores will be, but we're going to work on giving more kids access and really getting them involved in those courses.
So would you know off the top of your head how many AP exams we would have to pay for if we had people taking AP exams?
Yes. Great question. Let's see.
Once in a while, I guess.
So, we have, don't, yes, I do. So we have around, I have the numbers not totaled up, but we have 19, a total of like 30 courses offered. And I have the numbers, but I didn't total it, but I can get that to you before the night's over. My school, if you'd like, with my candy-dandy calculator, because there's a lot of columns.
And a long, just one more question with the AP hack, you said?
Yes.
Is that going to solve some of the problems that we're hearing from some of our parents at Lafayette High School who are saying some of their students are having a hard time getting the AP classes that they need at Lafayette High School?
It should if we increase the request, and we are working on building enrollment by generating student interest. We're working this year on possibly having students do videos to kind of advertise what is, you know, student voice and to why we would want a student to be in a course, and having the teachers kind of speak to that as well. We're really just working to eliminate barriers across the board. We really capitalized on the AP potential last year, and taking that, the AP potential results will let us know what students should be, have the potential to succeed in an AP class. And we know that students, for the first time they take a course like this, they don't always get the 3, 4, or 5. It's their first time being exposed to that type of learning. And it's better for them to have the opportunity to be there, to learn, to collaborate with others, and to hear from a teacher and experience education on that level. So we're working to increase the number. And absolutely, if more students are exposed to it, and we hack the barriers and get more kids involved, we would see enrollment go up, which would increase the number of courses.
Chair, if I could just follow up to some of Ms. Hummel's comments. So even for students who choose not to take the exam because they don't think they'll get a 5, colleges and universities are still looking at the rigor. So that is important to take the class, even though you don't take the exam, because they're looking at the rigor. But then also wanted to point out that some of our AP classes, and some of them are at Lafayette, are duly enrolled classes. So even though a student doesn't take the exam, they are getting college credit, even if they don't take the exam, because it's-
Yes. And there, we have a lot of dual enrollment classes too, some that aren't connected with AP.
And then some students that would get a 5, for example, for AP chemistry, and they want to go into med school, they're not going to want to take that 5. They're going to want to take the chemistry class in college.
Absolutely.
Speaking of dual enrollment, it would also be wonderful to have those statistics for this cohort as well. Yeah, how many students got dual enrollment credit?
Dr. Worley's going to harl some fingers.
Not necessar-, yeah. Take your time.
Thank you, Dr. Worley. Lastly, the WJCC class of 2018 were offered $23.8 million in scholarships. This concludes the presentation for Portrait of a Graduate for a class of 2018 that we have. We'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
I just thought of one, Mr. Thorpe. So with that, the number of the scholarship dollar, like how does that compare nationally, or even to like school divisions that are like ours? Maybe you don't have any-
Oh, we can investigate that. That would be, I know for our school division, that number is self-reported by our students. We-
In most places, it is self-reported.
We will find that information out.
So back on page two, the difference between an on-time graduation rate of 92 and the cohort completion rate of 95, can you just explain what that means?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. So in terms of the on-time graduation rate, that's actually the same thing as the cohort graduation rate. So these are kids that were first-time ninth graders in the fall of 2014 and that graduated, met graduation requirements in the spring or late spring, summer of 2018. Our cohort completion rate, that's the on-time graduation rate plus the percent that earned their GED.
And then one other question, and then I'm done. Sorry. The, so the portrait of a graduate, the ACT going down for WJCC or falling below the state average, is that a, that's on page three. English score at 23.3?
Yes.
Right, that one right there. Of course, you know, the first thing I do, I'm always looking and going, oh, what's below? So for the English, is that a decrease from last year? Like, were we above the state average last year and fell a little bit below this year?
We, we fell a little bit from the cohort class of 2017 to 2018. We'd be happy to provide you with that information.
I just wondered, like the only thing that makes us-
Dr. Beers?
I have a question about the dropout.
I have a question about the dropout rate. If a high school student, family moves and he leaves the school and the school's never notified that he's moved, how's that affect the dropout rate?
That counts as a dropout.
It does count as a dropout. So our actual dropout, what I would call real dropout rate, may actually be lower. Because the ones who move away and the school isn't notified, you, you have to count them as dropout. Yeah.
For our best to track them down.
Sure, oh, I know. But I know you can't always do that. So I think that, that's just something people need to be aware of that, that it's not just, uh... That's not, that doesn't represent what you traditionally would think of as dropouts. Okay, that's all.
Yeah, Mrs. Young?
Yes, I'm, I'm looking at the Portrait of a Graduate on page number two, the graph that talks about standard diploma, advanced studies diploma. When I add those figures, that's ninety percent. So what are the other students getting if they're not getting a standard or advanced studies diploma?
Thank you. There were about twenty students in the graduating class of 2018 that earned either a modified diploma or a special diploma. These are for students that have severe specialized learning disabilities and have, and are on track to meet those IEP requirements and therefore earn either a modified diploma or a special diploma.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Two questions. One is a follow-up to Ms. Young. So those students that are earning the modi-, the modified diploma, can A, enter post-secondary education?
I do not know that. We will find that information for you.
And then back to Ms. Hummel on page two. I was just curious. So students who graduate in the summer, like we have the special summer graduates. So are they counted in the on-time? That's still on-time, even though it's not in June, but like-
Yes.
Dr. Kelly?
No. I have a leaning water bottle problem.
Anyone else? Thank you both very much. Appreciate your time. All right, the next information item, discussion item is seven point zero two, two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-three Strategic Plan Implementation Update. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On September eighteenth, the division lost a new strategic, launched a new strategic plan. And Dr. Murphy is here to provide a report on all of the work that has been done by all the various departments so far this year. Thank you, Dr. Murphy.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members. Tonight, I would like to provide you with an update on the progress we have made on our new five-year strategic plan, Elevate Beyond Excellence. This plan affirms the division's commitment to creating opportunities for all students to reach their full potential through thoughtful instruction and rigorous curriculum delivered in a safe and welcoming learning environment. This plan is the framework for improvement and decision-making, and also guides the teaching, learning, administration, and operations of WJCC schools. Goal one speaks directly to the core business of the division, teaching and learning, and seeks to make the educational experience more data-driven and targeted to our young learners. Directly beneath the goal, you will see three or more strategies we plan to employ to achieve the desired outcome. Strategy one, focus on the use of formative assessments. Charging schools and divisions and division instructional leaders to develop criteria for effective small group instruction. Elementary teacher groups created common assessments and tested students before and after receiving a unit of small group instruction. You can see in the chart, growth in math skill proficiency. A big part of this improvement is because we were able to provide targeted instruction based on pre-assessments. School leaders and teachers have recently received training on the student growth mindset, which is the belief that they can learn more or become smarter if they work hard and persevere. Training was also provided to, for student goal-setting and using map data to guide information and instruction of small groups. Map data is also being used to determine the precise levels at which students will be introduced to a targeted skill. And for students in grades K through eight, we have set academic goals with learning strategies. For example, a student may set the goal to increase his or her reading level and use the strategy of taking notes about the main idea of long paragraphs to increase their understanding. School leaders and the elementary literacy coordinator identify differentiation as the focus for walkthrough observations. Literacy action teams participated in training to best utilize the newly-developed walkthrough form that supports improved teacher practice with small groups. As a result of these efforts, the percentage of observed differentiation during walkthroughs has increased from twenty-two percent to sixty-eight percent through November. Goal two seeks to ensure that all of our learners have equitable opportunities to grow and succeed. Strategy one focuses on the use of multi-tiered systems of supports. In August, one hundred and twenty-eight participants from the school-based MTSS teams came together to receive additional training and to begin action planning for the upcoming school year. This training focused on behavior, trauma-informed care, and restorative practices. Each school-based team developed an action plan that focused on positively impacting the school's discipline data. School administrators and coaches attended the first quarterly community of practice meeting to reflect on action plans, discuss how to further MTSS implementation in the building, and share best practices. A primary target of MTSS is to reduce and eventually eliminate disproportionality in discipline outcomes. To address this concern, school-based intervention data is pulled monthly and reviewed quarterly with schools. These meetings also review strategies to address non-mandatory suspensions such as restorative practices, detentions, and conferencing. Suspensions by ethnicity are also reviewed, as well as students with disabilities, to monitor and address disproportionality. The second equity strategy is all about access. On, on October eighth, all WJCC student employees were enrolled in required training on cultural competence. The training was geared toward helping teachers and staff embrace, appreciate, and more clearly understand people from cultures or belief systems different from their own. An AP action team has been organized to review advanced placement practices and implement changes through the school retool process. For middle school, middle-level honors trend data will drill down to identify the enrollment by subgroups in honors English seven and honors English eight and will be analyzed at their next team meeting. Acknowledging that achievement gaps begin long before high school, work continues at the elementary level to assess the impact of and monitor enrollment of students, of underrepresented student groups in the Emerging Scholars Program. As a reminder, the short-term goal of Emerging Scholars is to identify students who may not be considered for enrichment programs using traditional methods of identification. The long-term goal is to nurture high academic potential at an early age so identified students will be prepared to engage in challenging and rigorous coursework and programming in the middle school and beyond. The Emerging Scholars Program is currently at all WJCC elementary schools. Goal two also seeks to provide greater access to high-quality preschool education programs. To that end, the Bright Beginnings Action Team met weekly to review the wait lists and update databases. Currently, there are fifty-five at-risk three- and four-year-old students on the waiting list. The database also captures the number of two-year-olds that have been referred from Child Development Resources to Bright Beginnings due to having an identified disability. You'll recall that we are required to provide preschool services to any child identified as needing special education services. Between the CDR referrals and the number of students transferring into WJCC with IEPs, we've seen a drastic increase in our special education population. Consequently, based on current resources, we are unable to move more children off the waiting list. Goal three of Elevate Beyond Excellence focuses on communication and engagement. The action team is working to strengthen internal and external communication based on stakeholder input, foster a welcome culture for our schools, and more fully engage diverse populations within the school division. Some of the progress in this area includes the creation of a new weekly principles packet where important information and events are shared with school-based administrators. The action team also launched a daily e-tip as a resource for parents that is posted to our social media at noon each day. These e-tips offer conversation prompts, activity suggestions, and ways parents can support classroom learning at home. And we also offer the daily e-tips in Spanish. Based on input from support employee form, the school division is adding text messaging to the many ways it will notify families and staff of school closures and other important announcements. Knowing that text messages and social media are quick ways to spread news, the division is also expanding its available platforms to include Instagram in addition to Twitter and Facebook. Two final items worth noting. The action team is putting together a focus group of parents whose primary language is not English to gather information about their communication preferences. And the team is researching and developing training for front-office staff on best practices for creating a welcoming environment for parents and visitors.
Dr. Murphy?
Sure.
Is that what you mean by first impression? Is that, is the first impression-
As you walk through the welcoming environment. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's not a faculty or staff's first impression of a child. It's the child and the family's first impression-
As they walk into our environment. Yes, ma'am.
As they walk. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Goal four focuses on all aspects of work which create a safe and secure environment for our students and staff. The action teams are beginning work on three strategies. Strategy one focuses on the mental wellness of our students. Strategy two, the safety, a safety committee has been created that will analyze the security of our facilities, buses, and campus areas. And the action team for strategy three is working to create a master document which will comprehensively identify all training requirements by position. Some of the progress in this area includes training for all counselors regarding direct counseling services requirements based on the American School Counseling Association's guidelines, and the use of track, of a tracking tool to effectively track counseling services. First marking period data indicates thirty-four percent of the counselor's time was spent in direct service delivery. The team also worked to determine the baseline for the number and percent of students who receive homebound services. Last year, sixty-six percent of homebound services were for mental health concerns. For the first marking period this year, twenty-two percent of the homebound placements are due to mental health concerns. Sure.
Dr. Murphy, back to the, the data point of thirty-four percent of the counselor's time is, is providing direct services. So what is, what is the-
The optimum is eighty percent. And, and that's our current status with all the responsibilities of counselors.
And then you said the homebound services is actually-
Amount of students receiving homebound services with mental health concerns has decreased.
So far.
In first quarter.
In the first quarter, yes.
So, yeah, yeah. First quarter's not a- So wait and see.
Yes, it's, the sixty-eight was an aggregate of the entire year. So we're just in the first quarter.
That doesn't include the winter months.
Right, or, yeah, or as the year goes on, yeah.
It tends to go up.
I could say about the counseling services as well, obviously at different times of the year, counselors are focused on different things. So that percentage will likely change as well.
Other progress for goals for, goal four includes the creation and initial meeting of the Strategic Plan Safety Committee, development of a draft checklist to more effectively analyze lockdown drill components, and development of the review tool to align school safety audit results with work orders to ensure continuous improvement in our safety infrastructure. And lastly, the identification of work groups to ensure all employee positions are considered as training requirements are identified and documented. Goal five focuses on human capital and positive culture. The action team is working to attract, employ, support, and retain highly-effective teachers, administrators, support staff, and substitute staff committed to our students and the school system. Some of the progress in this area includes a review of the regional compensation data and a presentation to the school board on potential options for future compensation. Also, due in no small part to previous adjustments the board made to bus driver pay, we are fully staffed in that area. In fact, we're the, one of the only divisions in the area who aren't facing a bus driver shortage. Another strategy in this area to support recruitment is the use of on-campus visits at historically black colleges and universities, including Norfolk State and Virginia State. Finally, we're using employee groups to gather input and feedback on important issues. For example, we surveyed all WJCC staff about their preference for makeup days after the recent hurricane. These efforts underscore our commitment to valuing the voice of WJCC school team. Yes.
Are you also going to Hampton University?
Yes, yes, yes. And a couple others, we just, I just put those two up there because I'm actually on the, the Howard visit team myself, so I'm excited.
Right, so that was one of my questions too. So that, we're, we're making onsite visits to more than just two HBCUs.
Yes, ma'am. I just put two, for example. Yes, ma'am.
But have, have, have we always made onsite visits, or is this something new? HBCUs.
I think Mr. Baker can pop up to give us more information. I know it's been a priority for the last couple of years. Mr. Baker?
Right, I think for this presentation, we've, actually this fall, we've been to Norfolk State and Virginia State, but traditionally, we go to all five, the four of Virginia and Howard. And then sometimes we'll go to North Carolina, another, other universities too. But physically, this fall, I went to Norfolk State and I went to Virginia State.
So what I'm getting at is that different than what we've done in the past? Because we, because we're still struggling to, to hire teachers of color. So, so how is this different than what we've done?
I think we'll even go to other, we're looking into other ones too, and we're researching, you know, other like schools in like North Carolina. We've gone to some in the past that haven't borne out many opportunities for us, but we'll look at other, historically by colleges and universities that go to.
I think the other thing to keep in mind is the overall number of students going into education in programs regardless of race is continuing to slide. So the number of white students who wanna become teachers, that number's also, is also dropped. And so African-American students, it's the same, it's the same thing. So it's, it's, it's just hard to recruit when you don't have as many, you know, as many people available.
Mr. Baker, do you know how many students graduated last year from Norfolk State that with an education degree?
I, I could get that for you. I'm off the top of my head.
I mean, I think, relating to what Dr. Beers said, I think that, that is an issue because if you only have a hundred and forty-six students, they're, you know, they're gonna be in very high demand all over the place.
Oh, it was like a dozen. It was, it was small. Even when I was there this fall, as we were talking to the students, and I apologize, even the students we were talking to, they weren't even, they were in programs that weren't even leading to teacher education. Some of them were in programs that led to folks who maybe wanted to work in preschools. It didn't, it did not lead to teacher licensure. So that was a challenge.
So we don't have any idea, I mean, but if you could get that information of how many would graduate with a license?
It's small number. It's like a dozen, or, I mean, it's, it's not very big numbers.
But across the country, schools of ed are, are producing fewer and fewer.
Right.
About forty percent, correct.
Yeah, across the country.
I'm well aware, I'm aware of that, but the, the problem is, is attracting minority teachers because that's something that's a high priority for our division, so.
Dr. Murphy, just one, a last additional follow-up question with regard to this goal. Is there a focus at all on retention, particularly of our teachers of color? As part of the human capital and positive culture, are we focusing on ways to keep those teachers once we hire them?
Yes, I mean, I guess Mr. Baker can speak again to that.
We're trying to keep everybody, so we're analyzing and doing exit surveys with, with all, all the teachers that leave us.
Right, but I guess proactively, in terms of building a positive culture, are there, are there new, new and or different things that we could do to address that specifically? It's different than what we've done in the past.
For teachers of color, or?
Yes, targeting those teachers because we seem to hire them and then lose them and hire them and lose them.
Yeah, I think something, if we could need to- You have to look and see if you hire them and lose them at a different rate than you hire other, and lose other teachers.
Yes, because the first five years is critical.
Right, so I mean, we, it's, and then you have to look at, where do those twelve kids that come from Norfolk State wanna go work? They wanna live.
Yes. Okay. Goal six is strictly business, focusing on efficient- Goal six is strictly business, focusing on efficiencies and the processes that allow the instructional staff to do the impressive work they do. Goal six progress to date includes, the Action Committee met over the course of two months to identify the requirements for a strategic management system. Stakeholders from finance and human resources have met and documented current workflows that are required to onboard new employees with the outcome to make this and related processes more efficient. Work with Immuno's vendor has started and will continue into the spring. A change management process has been created in draft form by the Action Team. This draft process will be shared with various stakeholders over the coming months to evaluate its effectiveness for full implementation. And finally, the fiscal year 2020 operating budget is being developed to now align with the strategic goals. Yes.
What is the Immuno's?
Immuno's is our HR and finance processing tool. It's a, it's a, it's a, what would I say, a system?
Has our checks and, is it what?
Everything.
It does everything. Okay, so that was the one that we had to hire a half-time person to be able to pay twice a month?
Correct.
Because the Immuno system couldn't figure that out. Right.
This, this is our main system for finance and, and HR.
Okay. We, it's been like a two-year conversion process?
Two, two years or slightly more, and still reviewing processes and making them more efficient.
Well, this concludes my update. As you can see, we are hard at work all across the division, taking actions to bring the strategic plan to life in classrooms, schools, and offices as we elevate beyond excellence. Pending your questions.
Dr. Murphy, I, I was taking notes. I want to go back to two. I didn't realize that we could jump in, and so to go...
Just jump in.
So now going back in time?
Right.
To goal number two. There was a slide where we showed a break, a breakout of students who were suspended, and I didn't see students with disabilities. Where, where is that number?
Well, students with disabilities would not be like, this is a racial demographic slide, so they would be...
Although that would be interesting for me to see, to know how many students, regardless of color or ethnicity, how many students as, as a subgroup, I would like to see that, if you could get that to me.
I will.
That would be great. Right, but I could just have that information. And then, and I'm excited to, to, to know that we're doing cultural sensitivity training, and that's, and that's not like a one-and-done kind of thing. So that's something that will continue to, to thread throughout our professional development.
Yes, ma'am. Just this morning, we were talking about the, the teacher conference for the summer, and that's one of the strengths that we're going to integrate into the teacher conference as well.
Very exciting.
And we also, it was the main theme of the teacher conference last summer also. So there was training across the whole system.
Mr. Kelly?
So you had a slide earlier about the math and the pre and the post. Go back to that.
The differentiation, I'm seeing, here we go.
And go. So, so tell me about the pre-test and the post-test. What was, I mean, so is this, I guess, you would expect a certain amount of progress as a kid goes through, and we don't have a control group here, so we can't say how much better this would be with or without. So can you just talk about, a little bit about what, what was the education here and how that worked?
About the development of the Common Assessment.
Sure, absolutely. So in our elementary grades, we have pre-assessments and post-assessments for every mathematics unit. And so the pre-assessments are anywhere from three to five items that are aligned with the 2016 standards of learning for mathematics. And then based on those three to five item assessments, then students are broken down into groups of far to go, or close to proficient, or proficient, or advanced. And then teams decide what strategies they're going to incorporate with each one of those bands of students, and that, that's a starting point for instruction right at the beginning of the unit. And what we can see here is that the impact of that first-time instruction is really making a difference in the, in the proficiency of students.
Yeah. I think, I think I follow that. The other thing too is, is can we get a copy of these slides?
Absolutely.
I'd appreciate that, just because a lot of information to kind of digest, and then may have other questions.
Okay, and then, and it's also included in the, the mid-year progress update document that you will receive.
Will receive.
Will receive.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, yes, that we have.
There are some of it in there. Just this presentation would be nice.
It's the short version.
Anything else, Mr. Kelly?
Nope.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I, I was going to say about pre-assessment. One of the things about pre-assessment is you can have two students who pre-assess. One of them has a much higher score on the pre-assessment than the other kid. But when they get post, when you do the post-assessment, the kid who was lowest showed far greater growth than the kid who was already there to begin with.
Right.
And sometimes we, we lose that, and that's, that's really important to, to recognize. If you have a low score, what we want to see is, is growth, is progress, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Hummel, are there, are there norms that you are looking at? Like, this slide to me doesn't mean anything to me because I, I don't, I can't refer to anything, or I, I wouldn't know what is seventy-six good, is seventy-six aver, you know, like I, I don't know what the expectation is. Was there anything surprising, or were you super pleased with this? Or did you see, oh, we need some improvement? And I just think if you could give us like your, your takeaways on this data, because I don't know how to read it.
This data is meant to show progress and growth from the beginning of the unit to the end of the unit. Answer your question about satisfaction, the end numbers aren't a hundred, so we're not satisfied.
Oh, okay, so one hundred would be?
Proficient.
Efficient.
Well, what, what we, what we want is we want one hundred percent of our students' scoring proficiency. Each of our teams sets a goal for at least eighty percent of students to be proficient by the end of the unit. For those students who aren't proficient at the end of the unit, what teams do is they, they take a look back at the strategies that they incorporated and said, all right, what didn't work for our students who weren't successful? And then they incorporate a different strategy. Or they might look at what worked for another student and incorporate that different strategy. So the learning and the intervention and the reinforcement with skills doesn't end at the end of the unit. This is just, these are just our pre-assessment and post-assessment results. We wanted to share growth with you. We're looking for continuous improvement.
I think the key thing is teachers are having this conversation at the end of every unit, and so they know exactly where every student is and are starting to meet their needs and intervening wherever they need to do so. So this is an ongoing formative process rather than just a figure at the end of the year.
And then do you, as an administrator, have a dashboard of this so that you are seeing this and you can, you can parse it out based on schools and classrooms?
Yes, by the school level.
Yes, at the school level, yes, at the team level, yes, at the teacher level.
I, I just want to thank you all for being here and presenting this. The thing I'm most excited about is aligning the budget to this plan. And, and I, I look forward to how you all do that, because that's hard, and it's very, very hard, particularly when such a huge part of our budget is personnel. And so how you target personnel to certain goals and so, but I'm looking forward to it, particularly how, how you apply it to the equity goal, because that's, that's the one I think that's going to be the trickiest. But I, I look forward to your figuring that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, the next seven items are policies that we're going to review, and then we'll then go on the consent agenda for the second January meeting, is that right? Our regular meeting, is that right, Ms. Sorsa?
They could go on the first meeting if you wanted, as an action item under.
Okay, on, do we have a consent agenda on our first meeting?
I'm sorry, as a action item.
So for each one would be all seven, action? Okay, that's fine. Thank you. All right, the first is eight point zero one revised policy IIAC library material selection and adoption. Dr. Heron, Policy Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Bowen is here tonight to, to represent, present these policies. Mr. Landers is actually not well this evening, but we have a, a great replacement.
Thank you for attending, yeah.
Dr. Heron, Madam Chair, school board members. I'm here tonight to present policy IIAC and IIAC dash R, library material selection and adoption. There is no corresponding VSBA policy. The policy now reflects what we do, and the reg, the regulation reflects how we do it. This policy has been reviewed by the WJCC Library Media Specialist, the attorney, and the Policy Committee. The language has been updated to align to the AASL National School Library Standards for Learners, School Librarians, and School Libraries.
And the regulations are just shared with us as a, as a courtesy?
Correct.
So we're adopting the policy, just to be clear. Any questions on this? You want to add as the Policy Committee? All right, thank you very much. And that, do you have, do you have the other, all three I's?
I do.
Okay, so let's talk about IIBEB Bring Your Own Device program.
This policy was adopted in November 2013, and the only changes made are those recommended by the attorney, and there is no corresponding VSBA policy for it either.
Questions? Thank you. Does Policy Committee want to add anything? Okay, so then we'll talk about revised policy IKB homework.
Good evening. Again, the purpose of this agenda item tonight is for your consideration to revise policy IKB homework. It was adopted in nineteen seventy-four, revised in nineteen ninety, and last reviewed in two thousand and one. And basically, we actually took this to all of our principals in September of twenty eighteen and said, we'd like to consider revising this policy. Take a month, take it back to your teams, give us your feedback. We gave the current policy as well as the VSBA policy. Couple weeks later, they came back, and the themes of the feedback that we got were, we'd like our new policy for IKB to be flexible, because different students at different levels have different needs with respect to practices for homework. In addition, we wanted homework to be purposeful. And third, we wanted it to be more in line with our current VSBA policy. This revision was reviewed by the attorney and went by the Policy Committee, and be happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Next, our series of communication policies, revised policy KB Public Information Program.
Ms. Cox?
Good evening. Tonight we bring before you policy KB for revision. It was first adopted in nineteen eighty-two and revised in nineteen eighty-four. Much has changed in public information since then. So tonight we have a revision before you that is more in line with the VSBA policy and our current practices. It's been reviewed by the attorney and by the Policy Committee.
Any questions or anything Policy Committee would like to add? Okay, then we'll move on to KBC News Media Relations.
KBC News Media Relations, again, adopted in nineteen seventy-four, has not been revised since nineteen seventy-four. The revisions before you tonight reflect, are in line with VSBA policy and reflect our current practices. This too has been reviewed by the attorney and by the Policy Review Committee, and we provided you an accompanying, accompanying regulation for information purposes.
Any questions? Excellent, then we'll move on to policy, revising policyKF Distribution of Information Materials.
We have jumped forward. This policy was first adopted in two thousand and seven and was last reviewed in two, revised in two thousand and eight. The recommendation before you tonight is to revise the policy to bring it more in line with VSBA policy and current WJCC schools' practices. Most notably, it re, it removes a reference to regulation that did not exist. The attorney has reviewed the policy, as has the Policy Review Committee.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. It was easy, thank you. And then finally, revise and recode policy IHGB Home Instruction to policy LBD Home Instruction. Dr. Heron?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board. Dr. Heron, I wish I could come up with a catchier introduction, but I'm here representing a policy having to do with home instruction, and it was adopted in two thousand and one as IHGB. And in order to align ourselves with VSBA policy, we are requesting to recode it to In two thousand and seventeen, changes to the code of Virginia were made that made it mandatory on the school division's part to add additional language in communication with our homeschool families. So the policy is reflecting that. And it was, we made the recommended revisions to align. It has been approved, reviewed, sorry, by our attorney, and the Policy Committee has reviewed these revisions twice. I do need to draw your attention to line one twenty-nine. This evening, at the end of the day, I found a missing word. Alas, the word of.
One twenty-nine?
Line one twenty-nine. And this is a section that states that students who are being homeschooled will not be allowed to enroll in any of our courses. And you'll see that it says Fine Arts or Career and Technical or World Language.
Oh, okay. Oh, it's not a technical world language course?
Correct. You have to take your career tech courses in French.
Got that at an opportune time, because we're not taking actions, so it's great. Any questions on this one? Oh, I'm sorry, were you done?
I'm done.
Okay, sorry. Any questions on this one, or, yeah?
Can I see, I'm, I'm looking on here. It says that a lot, there's a lot of these students that are being homeschooled cannot, cannot enroll in courses that they might be interested in or need instruction in. So what can they enroll in?
They cannot enroll in any of our courses. As the state policy analyst said to me, the farther you get away from the restrictions of public education, the farther you get away from resources. So they don't have access to our coursework or extracurricular activities.
Okay.
And that's not, and that's not unusual.
No, I know that, it just, it's always bothered me, so.
Well, we're only funded by the number of students that are enrolled in our district.
Right.
If we're homeschooled, you're not enrolled in our district.
And we have responsibilities to you that cost us money.
Sandy, that was one of the things that Ms. Hummel and I talked a lot about, particularly with the career tech, and, and we, that's why it went back two times, because we wanted to find out, was there a way that homeschool children could access particularly the career and tech? But there, there is no way. If you opt out of public education, then, then you opt out of public education.
I find that especially disturbing for, especially for the way we're going with career and tech.
Oh, I think, but one of the other health issues here is that homeschool children do not have to have all the immunizations that our regular children have to have to go to school. And I would prefer that they not be around the other kids because they haven't been immunized.
Anything else? But thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So those will all, we'll migrate over to our next agenda for action. And the next series is action items. The first is nine point zero one Personnel Actions. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve personnel actions as, that were presented this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Young, can I have a second?
Second.
All right, here, any discussions, motion's been made in second, did any discussion? Right, hearing none. Ms. Sorsa, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Oenby?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye. Okay, that brings us to nine point zero two, approval of minutes from the November twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from eleven twenty-seven, two thousand and eighteen.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Right, it's been moved in second, did any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sorsa, will you call the roll?
Ms. Oenby?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Next is item nine point zero three, the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty, Twenty Nine Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Kelly, can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty, Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Nine Superintendent's Proposed Capital Improvement Plan with the removal of the following projects from the Fiscal Year Twenty CIP. Number one, Berkeley well removal. Number two, Jamestown High School entrance redesign. And number three, the War Hill High School track replacement.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Before we toss it to the board for discussion, in the wake of our joint meeting, I'd like staff to comment on a couple of things, or a handful of things, actually. Some related to high school, some related to elementary school. But before we go into those, just some overall items. The first, can you, Dr. Heron, explain why the motion was made with the removal of those items for the, so the public is aware?
Yes, this evening, the Board of Supervisors approved the end-of-year spending plan, and in that end-of-year spending plan, those three items were included. So we now have funding to make those happen within the next year, and they don't need to be included in the CIP.
Thank you. Another overall question that came up, or comment that came up in that meeting, was the experience that some members around the table had, that had had with a relation to inflation of construction costs. And so can you speak to that a little bit about what we have in our fund balance and what you do for contingency and so forth?
Sure. I'm going to ask Mr. Snipes to speak to that, as he's provided some of that information to you this evening.
Relation to contingency, we always design 10% for contingency for projects. Other question?
And so what if that's not sufficient? Do we have anything in reserve to?
That would be, that would be Ms. Barnes that would probably can answer that question in regards to the finances.
Good evening. Actually, right now, for projects that were started prior to, or approved prior to fiscal 2018, we have 3.3 million in fund balance.
So if something catches us off guard, we do have a little bit of a cushion?
Yes, ma'am. And that's just projects that were approved prior to 2018.
And we would have to work with the localities to?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Would it be possible to ask one clarifying question?
Sure.
Relating to that. So I think the conversation about that in particular at the joint meeting was that we account for a 3% increase for, and when?
Every year.
Every year. But we actually plan for it, but there's a 10% contingency. So I guess just to make that clear to the public, because what we talked about at the joint, at the joint meeting was, was a 3%.
Right.
Set number for inflation, but we actually have, we do have 10%, because that was a number that was discussed by one of the City Council members, Mr. Maslin. Right, so we, we do that.
How it works is each year, we'll add 3%, basically for inflation, and then that year, we add a 10% contingency.
And I'll just caution you on the 10% contingency, that's project, that's a, that's a normal project management, and that covers a lot of things and not just a cost increase of materials and labor, it costs, you know, change in scopes and other necessary things as well. So it's not just set aside to do only for price increases.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we circled back and referenced that. So the next, the next series of questions that we got around high schools had to do with asking about why War Hill was first, and then also, there were some questions about, could, could high school space use, be used differently to relieve our current space needs? Some ideas that were, or questions that were asked had to do with somehow taking advantage of our community college, online courses, just using space differently. And if you could just speak to that, Dr. Heron, and what your, your and your staff's thought process was with regard to, you know, justifying the need, given the dynamic nature of how education is changing right now.
I could start with the War Hill question. First of all, one, there is land availability at the site, there's access to public transportation, there's access right next door to Thomas Nelson Community College. At the moment, the growth, any growth that's happening is towards the north of the county. The infrastructure is already in place in War Hill. For example, if we add on to Jamestown right now, we do need to expand the cafeteria. War Hill's infrastructure is already in place. And of course, we also have included in that an auxiliary, the request, an auxiliary gym, which could be done at exactly the same time. Those are just some of the rationale behind War Hill first.
And then if you could speak a little bit to, have we exhausted or thought about creative ways to no long, you know, to perhaps buy some time or not need the space at all at the high school level by using the space differently, or using adjoining space with partner agencies, or online learning? Could you just speak to that a little bit?
I think it's a complex question.
It is, indeed.
But certainly, there was a lot of discussion at the joint meeting about early college, and we do have students that go and partner with Thomas Nelson for early college credit. Some travel to Thomas Nelson College. Some of those classes actually take place on-site. And all of the early college program is actually in the second semester, so the space is still needed in the first semester. So there's really not a lot of possibility there right now for the, for extra use of space. Online learning, just catching a little bit of information here, we've currently 172 students participating in online courses. It's not the instructional, best instructional approach for all courses, nor is it the best approach for all students. So you have to have the right kind of student and the right kind of course to offer that as an option. Potentially, could some space come through that option? Maybe. But a lot of our students are actually doing those courses while still in, in our building. And I don't know, Dr. Worley, if I've left something out in terms of potential there.
And then if we could move towards elementary school, and then after that?
Sorry.
Yeah, sure.
Can we ask questions?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I was looking at the response to regarding high school expansions. And Lafayette is currently 84% capacity. What if there was a shift in that capacity that would reduce the number of students that are either at Jamestown High School or, or I'm thinking particularly about Jamestown, and it would raise the capacity at Lafayette higher, but as I said at the joint meeting, 85% is not a magical percentage that, you could have 90% at Lafayette, and if, and if you did, how would that affect the other, other capacity in the other two high schools?
So the, the main question is, is about Lafayette and the space there.
Right.
At the moment, there is more space there. If we add on to War Hill first, then some of the programs in the 900 building at Lafayette would move to War Hill. And because of the original design of the 900 building in Lafayette, one was for an auto-tech program, and more classrooms could be created at Lafayette High School, and that would allow the potential for Lafayette to grow out to full capacity. Obvious, go ahead.
No, no, you, I'll let you finish.
Obviously, we are over-capacity at Jamestown right now, and we're under-capacity at Lafayette. I think as we do one school at a time, I think we've got to reconsider all options as to how best use the space.
Right. I guess what I'm thinking is, why not expand Lafayette High School first, and then move students from Jamestown High School and/or War Hill High School over to Lafayette?
The reason we need to do one before Lafayette is because the programs are there, and so the extra space in Lafayette is going to begin by moving the Learning Lab and the GED program out of that building, and that's going to allow more space at Lafayette. So it's a, it's a natural second choice because of the programming that, that's, that's there in the 900 building right now.
Why is more of the programming at Jamestown? I mean, I know the answer, but I'm going to ask the question. Why does Jamestown High School have more of those programs?
The GED and Learning Lab are actually at Lafayette right now. And Jamestown doesn't have any extra programs, specialized programs, right now.
So whatever is offered at Jamestown is also offered at Lafayette?
With academic programming, for the most part, yes. And I know Dr. Worley has worked very hard to look at the program of studies and offer programs across all three high schools.
And one, I guess, one, I'm, I'm probably not going to oppose too much of this, but I, I am not crazy about the idea of expanding Jamestown High School, just to expand Jamestown High School, when some of that growth could be mitigated by moving new students into some other high schools. I know nobody wants to talk about high school redistricting, but, you know, it's sort of the elephant in the room. It did come up at the joint, our joint meeting. Three or four of the members of City Council and the Board of Supervisors brought that up. So I just, I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, I believe Dr. Beers, you know, at the will of the Board, we may choose after the first year to, to revisit that. That would be the decision of the Board to go in that direction. It's certainly, I think now that we're, we've made a decision to add on rather than build a new high school, a new high school would have automatically meant redistricting across high schools. Now that we've decided to build on, I think we've got to do whatever it takes to let all three high schools fill out over time, and that one of those options would certainly be redistricting.
You know, and the other thing is, you don't have to redistrict all the grades. It's better to move the ninth and 10th graders and allow the 11th, 12th graders to finish up.
Anything else? Anything else on high school before we move to elementary school? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so elementary school, some of the, the two major themes there were about expanding versus building a new one. And then, and it kind of embedded and related to that were the idea of removing pre-K to relieve space for K5, and then building something else to accommodate the pre-K program. So could you talk a little bit about, could you respond to those two themes, please?
Sure. I think what would be important for the public to understand, that there was quite a bit of discussion behind the scenes before it even got to the Boards, to the table of the Board. This year, for the first time, we had a long-range planning committee, and we had participation from county and city representative and community representatives as well. And they had quite an extended discussion about elementary schools, whether we should build a new school, or whether we should add on to elementary schools. I'm going to ask Dr. Murphy, who was leading that committee, just to give us a sense of the discussion and thought process that went into the recommendation that we brought forward to you.
Good evening again. When the long-range master planning committee was formed, we knew we were going to discuss courses of action. Again, she's already mentioned that we had officials from the county, from the city, also from William &amp; Mary, and from various parts of the community. And we brought them in and basically had a discussion on what, what, what is our situation, what could we possibly do? With, in regards to the elementary situation, of course, the only two options that we explored were doing nothing, well, the three options were do nothing, and we were already at 98% capacity, to build another school or to add on to the schools. And looking at the amount that would be added on, it, we determined that it would be about 100 students would need to be added to seven of our schools. And when looking at the cost of that, I believe it's in the document here, according to the VDOE, the average cost of expansion is 125 square feet per student, times 100 students, which would end up being about $2.625 million. If you multiply that by seven schools, the expansion of the seven schools would be $18,375,000. And so that was one.
Which is half the price of what a new elementary school would be.
Which is, the actual, the average cost of elementary school right now is just around 20,000, 20 million, excuse me. I think the one we have, our one estimate came in around, I want to say 35?
35.
35 million.
That's the last number I was thinking of.
And that 20 million is for a 500-student elementary school. What we had projected out for was at least a 700 elementary school. So yes, it would be less, but not significantly so if we're adding on to several schools. Some of the issues with, with the add-ons is, of course, the, the space, whether there's actually land, and the infrastructure of a lot of our elementary schools, we would have to have quite a major study done to figure out if we could add students, and in most cases, I don't think we could. We could in some, but not all.
And codes are different. You know, it always has an impact when.
And so when you say infrastructure, you're talking about lunchrooms and not having, not having lunch start at 9:30 and end at 2:30?
Correct, correct.
Or spaces, shared spaces, playground facilities.
And like Tuana, for instance, I know it's a middle school, but you can't fit any more kids in the hall. I mean, the halls are just so.
So wide.
So wide. So if you put more kids in a school, that, all those spaces should be bigger than if, when they're designed for a 500 or 600 population.
Example, Laurel Lane at the elementary school, if you go into their cafeteria, it's really quite small. It may have some land outside of it, but it, it would need a whole, a lot of work done internally to support more students.
And lastly, we did consider the fact that by adding 100 students more to, to our schools, we'd have three schools at or over 800 students, which is far beyond the, what we consider optimum size for elementary schools.
But, but while we say that, we don't know that we can actually do that.
It, it may not be feasible. We have, we have to do an advanced study in order to figure out that. When you talk about the actual building itself, because they were not designed for expansion.
Right, so we can't, so we really, we really can't put numbers out there that we don't know if we can do it or not.
I mean, one of the things that I find, find very interesting about this, is we look at elementary school expansions, that whole discussion was pretty unsettling to me, because I watched Mr. Thorpe, and he was shaking his head rather vigorously, because when, because one of the things that happens, and I asked him about it later, is, is expanding cafeterias. When you look at Jamestown right now, Jamestown High School has a problem with a small cafeteria that needs to be expanded, but it's very hard to do that once a building is in place. And so in the future, like if we do go to build a new elementary school, maybe that should be something that should be considered, that if that building could be expanded in the future, that we would need to pre-plan for an expansion, by making sure that common areas such as the cafeteria, library, gym, were able to handle more students. But that's not where we're at. We're at a point right now where we have schools that may or may not be able to be expanded, and then again, you're looking at those common areas.
Any other questions about elementary school, or did you want to add any, offer anything additional? I guess I had one question. We talked a little bit about expansion, but the, the idea of dedicated pre-K space as a way to save money. One thing I was curious about during that conversation was, is there a difference construction-wise between an elementary school room and a pre-K room? I know they're outfitted internally differently, but if you're building one, in terms of size and material, I mean, are they, are they similar, not similar?
Currently, our, our pre-K and most of our elementarys, except JBB, are regular classrooms, they're just outfitted differently with, for, for pre-K schooling. So the classroom could be exactly the same, is exactly the same, except I think for JBB, where we had actually a pre-purposeful-built program. If you compare it to CDR, for example, it's totally purpose-built space, there's a very small bathroom in each room, it's, it's, the structure has been totally changed in the room that's taken over by CDR right now, but elementary schools, no.
Is that necessarily less expensive? I mean, so if you were going to build new pre-K space, would those rooms be smaller and therefore cheaper, or would they essentially be?
I think additional space anytime is going to cost more money. I don't know.
We've got, the VDOE reported last year, one school added a learning center for 180 students, and it costs $4,823,000. And that's for 180, of course. I think the proposal that was floated at the last meeting was regional pre-K centers. So if we're looking at, I think servicing a little bit over 300 kids, that would be three regional centers, so roughly four, four and a half million dollars per center.
Does that include staffing, therapists, et cetera?
That does not include, that's, that is not, it includes the site, but not the FFNE or the design. And then we start, we start talking about staffing as well, they're going to need some other common staffings as well, lead teachers, nurses, psychologists that go teach school.
Administrators.
Not, not to mention the pedagogical reason for having.
Transition.
For having the bright beginnings in the elementary schools.
The limited transition, that's our young, as long as we try to have them, you know, inculcate into that learning environment as soon as we can and stay there.
You know, Hampton has, they have a centralized preschool center down there, and I've, like Mr. Hummel, I, I think it's, it's a more natural kind of transition to have those little kids. little kids in an elementary school where they see the other kids, kindergarten, whatever, operating. And I'd rather, if we, if that program were to expand, I, I think the main thing would be to take into consideration the geography, where the, where the families live, where you have those children. So we would, and that combination would be to have whatever elementary school was there, close by. The idea of busing kids to one or two, you know, different centers is, I just, I don't, I really couldn't support that. I like, have the buildings. And if we do end up building a new elementary school, that will free up additional space. So hopefully, the program could be expanded. But should, you know, I know we're never going to get back to a neighborhood school, but it's still the idea being, well, this is, this is, you know, this is where my preschooler goes, rather than all the same places.
Mrs. Young.
I just, is there any research on best practices for including a preschool program in a regular elementary school? I mean, that's what we're talking about. And that's a lot of space that we're, that we're already consuming in our schools. But is there any research that supports the idea that, I mean, intellectually, emotionally, I can understand why we would want to do that. But is there a research-based information on having students in a regular school? Is that, does research support the fact that that's a better environment for them, for transitions, et cetera?
I'll defer to my elementary specialist.
Great.
There, there is research that supports the notion of minimizing transitions for, for students, especially our youngest students.
And you provide that to me, Mr. Thorpe. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Mr. Kelly.
I need to wait until Mr. Thorpe sits down. So for the, for our viewing public, can we just remind them what the, the population that served with this pre-K, and you know, who, who are these students that are in our pre-K program?
Thank you. In our Bright Beginnings program, again, I'm just going to start by just a general overview of what we're trying to accomplish. This is, we're providing services to students who have risk factors that may serve as barriers for students being successful in kindergarten. And so, we provide services for approximately 356 students aged 2 through 4, in four of our elementary schools. I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly, did I-
So, special ed students are there, and certain risk factors for these, for these children are part of our Bright Beginnings program.
That is part of our criteria for selection. And so, approximately, approximately 50% of our current Bright Beginning student population has specialized, identified specialized learning need.
And so, if we were to, to apply the criteria that we voted on our last meeting, where we said 80, when we get the 85% number, we're going to start looking at expansion. Since we have 55 kids on the waiting list, we should already be in the process of trying to figure out how to serve those 55 additional at-risk kids, and have some room for growth, so that we can get there. Because if we don't serve these kids at 2 to 4, we're going to serve them in greater, with greater need in, at, and greater expense, and at 5 years old, and when they go into kindergarten, and on into first, second, and third grade. So, yes, and that's actually informing the early stages of our budget thinking and our budget requests for FY '20. Yes, sir.
Mrs. Young.
Okay, Mr. Thorpe, don't sit down. Okay.
Wait till he sits down.
Oh yeah, let's wait. But can you address the issue of child find, and IDEA, and then the VD, the Virginia Department of Education's mandate for 2-year-olds, please? Because there is a, a difference there, even though IDEA supports that you're, we're supposed to take care of kids from birth through 2. But I think the Virginia Department of Education has gone further, where we're now using, introducing 2-year-olds into the school.
Thank you. I'm going to do my best with the first prong of that question. And I'm just going to read from response 1 to the SBQ that was at your workstation this evening. So child find mandates that school divisions are responsible for locating any child aged 2 to 21 with a suspected or identified delay or disability. And as a program, Bright Beginnings is responsible for locating these children ages 2 through 5. And 2-year-olds are, must be 2 by September 30th of the current school year. And once Bright Beginnings receives the referral from a parent, caregiver, teacher, or et cetera, Bright Beginnings is legally obligated to provide developmental screenings for students suspected of a delay. If they fail the screenings, continues through the process of evaluation. If they're found eligible with a disability, then Bright Beginnings will serve them.
Could you address the 2-year-olds, please?
Number 2.
Oh, great. Thank you. Public preschools in Virginia are obligated to serve 2-year-olds. Giving 2-year-olds a classroom was, this was a choice that we made many years ago. And it was informed by our WJCC preschool task force, and by the former director of Bright Beginnings. This decision continues to be rooted in beliefs and research about early and intense intervention is critical for students aged birth to 5.
That answer your question?
Well, I, I mean, I know the answer, because I've been reading. But I'm, I'm really concerned, because if you look at the graph that was shown earlier, 12% of our, 12% of those students that are in Bright Beginnings are 2-year-olds. And are there other ways to serve 2-year-olds other than being in the school setting?
Well, if they were identified, if they were identified for a disability, they'd still be ours. We'd still need to serve them. And that could be done in a variety of ways. The parent could be asked to transport them, and we could simply meet these children's IP needs and their IEP hours after the Bright Beginnings day. Or we could provide those services at home, but that would still be our responsibility. And some costs incurred with going home would be, going to students' homes would be mileage, would be staff time that was lost in travel, rather than actually serving students. So those are just a couple of thinkabouts.
Well, the other thing about Bright Beginnings is that, that's an integral part of the program, is, is collaboration and working with the parents. And there are home visits, and they, where they've learned how to, to work with their own children, to raise, raise little kids. And I think the other thing to realize is that there are at least a half a dozen risk factors that other preschools couldn't handle, children like that at that age. Bright Beginnings has highly qualified, trained staff who are there and are able to deal with them, and you know, recognize and deal with the children who have those. One, and one other thing I would say is, in terms of research, and God knows, there's tons of research in this area. But the, the major research that was done, it was done in Michigan, the Ypsilanti Early Childhood Project up there. And, and some really important things came out of that report. Because they did, it was longitudinal. We, they followed these kids for 20 years. And what they found was a much lower incidence of juvenile delinquency. Kids completed high school at a greater rate than if they hadn't gone through the program. There are all kinds of things. And most, you know, most of us don't think about, well, gee, what happens 20 years later? It's, we're more focused on, you know, how are they going to do next year or the year after? But it's pretty powerful stuff. And so, the more kids who have those risk factors, the more opportunities they have to become enrolled in Bright Beginnings. As, as, as Mr. Kelly said, you either pay now, when you're little, or you're going to pay a lot more when they're older. So it's, I don't know if you said exactly that way, Mr. Kelly, but it was, I think it was-
Try to stay out of the Penn State commercial.
Mr. Thorpe, can you, can you just tell, I mean, this is for purposes of the public, basically, how one of our preschool teachers, our Bright Beginning teachers' day is spent? I mean, I know part of it's in school instruction. Could you address that?
Before the day begins, our Bright Beginnings teachers and staff, they're meeting in teams and planning, making certain that they're able to provide the appropriate, developmentally appropriate, social, emotional, and academic learning opportunities that each of their students needs. And in the classrooms, there are a variety of needs that require to be met. After the four-hour school day, there are a variety of IEP meetings, team meetings, service providers, they're coordinating services. And then the point about which Dr. Beers was speaking was, the monthly home visits that Bright Beginning staff have with each, with each child's parent each, each month. And that helps to ensure, again, we talked about transitions, so that there's minimized transitions, not just between schools, but now school and home. And so, that the school and the home can work in tandem and provide a seamless environment where these students can grow and be successful.
I just have a question about Future Think, since that, that issue has come up. Future Think, when we were looking at the Stonehouse area, it was forecasting a larger number of students. But it, isn't Colonial Heritage, they, they don't have children in there, basically? I do understand there are some families that do have some, either as guardianships or whatever. But basically, there are not children in that area. Is that true?
Sorry, I would not know that. Can I?
Five. Were five kids, I think, in there. So, one of the, I think Future Think study had a 25% growth in there. So if you go from five, 25% growth, it's six. Math works.
Yeah, Mr. Kelly's correct. We, we do go into there to pick students up, but they're not designed to have students there. But it's not, it's very minimal.
And how does that affect the forecast for growth?
I think that was considered as, by Future Think, because they knew, they know that it's a-
Age restricted.
Age restricted community, community that will have minimal kids.
Yeah.
What they did, what the Future Think did is the new apartment complex we're looking at in Norwich, with, that might not have been inconsidered, but-
Which project was that?
The one that's before the planning commission now for-
It's passed.
Just passed through the planning commission for an apartment complex.
There will be children in there?
Most likely.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Are there any, any other questions about the CIP in general? Thank you, Dr. Heron, for being willing to, I think that the joint meeting was a productive one, and some really great questions came out of it. So I appreciate your staff taking the time to talk us through that. Does anyone else have any other questions, or are we, because there's a motion on the table, and a second, so. If there's nothing else, right, Ms. Thorne, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Oenvie.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
So the, the motion passes. And just as a point of reference, last year, I forwarded the, our request, capital improvement request, directly to city council and the board of supervisors with a cover letter. And I, I plan to do that again. That's an opportunity for them to see exactly what we requested directly from us. So, which I think seems appropriate. So I'll be doing that again, unless anyone has any concerns. Okay, that brings us to board member comments. Mrs. Taylor?
Everyone just stay safe out there and enjoy winter break coming up next week.
Mr. Kelly.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Thorpe for his patience and contributions tonight. We put him through the test today, so thank you for that. A lot has happened since our last meeting. Mrs. Hummel coerced, I mean, asked me to participate in the Christmas parade. I, I had a really good time. It was a lot of fun. And I got my selfies all done. But it was, it was fun going through the parade and watching, and seeing the kids and the parents connect with their principals and their mascots. And that was, that was really, I really enjoyed that. So, she can coerce me again next year, too. So. I went to the Hunchback of Notre Dame production at Jamestown High School. I thought that was really well done. And I'm just always amazed at the arts at our high schools, and our, in our middle schools, and our schools in general. I thought that was a great production. We talked about the joint meeting. I appreciated the participation of all of the elected city council members and supervisors at that meeting. I thought that went, went really, was really good. And I'd just like to thank Mrs. Barnes for her contributions to us through the years. And we are going to miss her as she segues. But just want to thank you for your support over these last few years.
Sorry, Mrs. Young.
Yes, I want to thank you, Mrs. Barnes. You're going to be missed. I just appreciate your, your lovely smile. So, that will be missed. I do want to thank Mrs. Gulick and Mr. Thorpe for the extended period of time, asking a lot of questions. And I appreciate that today, that I called Mrs. Gulick, and she was very forthcoming. And I appreciate that opportunity to have spoken with her about Bright Beginnings. That was informative, and I'm glad that it ended up on our school board questions. I thought the joint meeting was very informative, and could tell that there was a lot of wonderful comments and great thinking going on there, and concern about, about our kids. And that's, that's what's important to me. I want to thank our community members who have been vested in this process, for their assistance and their help, and their interest, because we need more people to be aware of what's going on, so that six months from now, we're not getting beat up. We'd like to get beat up before this all starts. And, I mean, truly, because you think about when you are going to ask for $40 million plus to build an elementary school. I would like all of those questions answered well before, so that the community's on board. Because it's an important investment, it's an expenditure of time and effort. So, if you have questions, please come forward to the school board, and/or to the administration, or Dr. Heron and her staff, because I'm more than happy to answer questions. Merry Christmas, and have a great New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I also would like to thank Mrs. Barnes for her, her expertise, and, and we will miss it. But as I said to her when we came in, we have her phone number, so we can track her down. Also, and staff also, very, Dr. Thorpe and Dr. Worley, it just, there are a lot of questions. And I did feel that the time with our governing bodies was well-spent. We had really good questions, a discussion. Wish it could have gone on longer, but I know we didn't, you know, didn't have time. I, I very much appreciated that. And, and I also would echo Mrs. Young's call to the public, that we need to, we need to hear from the public as we embark on a $60 million-plus set of projects, because it is your money. And we, we're, we're focused on what we're doing, but it's, it's always good to have a sense of what our, our very important constituents. Think about that as well. Unfortunately, I was out of town, and I missed the Hunchback of Notre Dame. But I, I have friends, parents, who's, who went, whose kids were in the production, and thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed it. And I'm sorry I missed it. And I also would like to say, have a safe and happy holiday, however you celebrate it, and, and be safe over the holidays. And let's hope for a, won't say a better New Year, but at least a more civil New Year.
Madam Chair, I'd like to remind Dr. Beers that Mrs. Barnes has caller ID, and so-
So she'll pick up.
Or not.
Yeah. Ms. Hummel?
Oh, I just want to echo what my previous school board members all said about the thanks and goodbye to Ms. Barnes. We will miss you. Also, I am glad I was able to coerce my, two of my fellow board members to walk in the parade with me. But mainly, I want to thank all of the principals, and all of the handlers, and the mascots that came out on a slightly rainy day on December 1st to march in that parade. on a slightly rainy day on December 1st to march in that parade. The, just the reaction from the crowds when they see their mascot and their principal is, it's just, it's really heartwarming.
It was fun. It was fun.
And fun. So anyway, but I wanted to, I know it takes effort to get those huge costumes on and meet up at 8:30 in the morning and go out there. But I really appreciated it on behalf of the WJCC Foundation as well for the innovative grants, for just getting the word out about WJCC Foundations. Wanted to thank that. I wanted to thank our funding partners for approving our, the mid-year spending. This is wonderful to be able to take something out of a CIP because it's already been funded. So I just want to tell them thanks for that. And Madam Chair, I think my comments are...
You. Ms. Ownby?
Mine really are just a ditto. Goodbye. We'll miss you, Ms. Barnes. Happy holidays to everyone. And then the parade was truly very, very fun and can't, look, look forward to doing that again next year. It was, it was a blast. And I'm excited that we had the joint meeting this year. It's, it's a learning process, but I think this is the first time that we had an opportunity to meet with our funding partners to discuss the CIP. And I think that was the right decision and we'll refine that process. And I'm excited about their strategic plan. A lot of people think that strategic plans are boring and not important, but they are what drive our division. And so I'm particularly excited about looking at academic achievement and those academic achievement gaps and cultural sensitivity and looking at recruiting teachers of color and retaining those. So that's all very exciting. And thank the staff for all their hard work as we've rolled that out and we began to actually do the hard work and begin to make progress in those areas.
Thank you. Madam Chair? I would just, I, I don't want to repeat everybody, but I would like to thank the liaison committee for coming up with the idea to have a separate joint meeting focused just on facilities. And I do think going forward, that is a, a smart thing to do. And, and I also did want to thank James City County for approving our request tonight. And hopefully the city will do so Thursday. I don't know if it's on their agenda or not, but it's certainly on an upcoming agenda. And then I just think, everyone's thanked Ms. Barnes, but I think you deserve a round of applause from all of us. We wish you best in your new adventure. Thank you for all you've done. Okay, is there anything else? Okay. All right, that brings us to upcoming events. Let me get this. The policy committee is meeting on the 19th of December at 8:00 AM here in the annex, room 309. Good luck.
OT.
Yeah, really, woo. And then our upcoming meetings, we have a budget work session on the 8th of January from 4:00 to 6:00 in room 300 here in the annex, followed by a closed session at 6:00 in room 309 down the hall. And then followed yet again by an organizational meeting, work session, and action items at 6:30 back here in 300. And then on the 22nd of January, we will have a budget work session again from 4:00 to 6:00 in the Stryker Center. Next year, we're moving to the Stryker Center. And followed by a closed session at 6:00. And then a public hearing on our operating budget at 6:30, followed immediately by a regular meeting.
Madam Chair, if I could just add also, the special education advisory committee is meeting tomorrow here at 6:30.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Yes, that's a makeup meeting. First two words.
And the next, the next item is to set the agenda for the next regular meeting. Well, our next meeting is actually an organizational meeting and a work session and action items. But preceding that is a budget work session and also a budget public hearing. So it's going to be a busy, busy day for us. What day is that again? The 8th. And what time is it? Four. Ms. Rizzo, could you get that on our calendars as soon as possible? Yeah, I was just realizing that it's not on mine.
It's not on mic.
Yeah. That would be great. And then we'll take action on the policies that we discussed tonight. So. Unless there's anything else? Meeting is adjourned. Everyone, please get home safely.